Good evening. It is Monday, July 28th, and I would like to call this regular school board meeting to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. I think it goes without saying that Superintendent Carnegie isn't sitting next to me, and I am not Chair Cunningham. So Chad Farnsworth, Assistant Superintendent of Operations and Facilities, will be taking the place of Superintendent Carnegie tonight, and I will try my best to take the place of Ms. Cunningham tonight. As we get into the agenda here, Board, do you have any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Mr. Farnsworth?
Yes, we'd like to remove 4.01 from the agenda and note that an HR addendum was added today to item 9.01, and the Board has been provided a copy. 4.01 is getting our former athletic director, who's retired, and our incoming in town at the same time. It's been a bit of a challenge, so they'll be prepared to show up at an upcoming meeting, so we can properly recognize and introduce those two gentlemen.
Perfect. Moving on, approval of the minutes. Mr. Farnsworth?
I recommend approval of the minutes from the School Board Workshop, June 17, 2024, and regular school board meeting, June 24, 2024.
They're moved. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0? All right. No representation on item 4.01, so moving on to public input.
I see we've got a number of public input cards from one of our very cherished employee groups, which is our SLPs. So I'd like to thank you guys, ladies and gentlemen, for showing up this evening. Just know that you are valued, and we're very aware of all of the issues concerning you guys and our critical shortage area and in contrast to the direct contracting that we have to do with employee or with outside folks to bring on to match up with our employees. And that the good news is, I know you guys have some meetings upcoming with our newly established ESC director, so hopefully we have some good conversations there, and you can bring him up to speed. And also, we have, you know, you guys are well represented by LCEA. We've got two bargaining sessions this week, so I look forward to anything that comes forward as we go through that bargaining process. And at our last bargaining session, we requested proposal on behalf of you guys. We'll see what comes to the table. And just know that whatever comments are made, because of course we can't direct deal and things like that, we can't respond to things that are related to compensation issues and working conditions. So just wanted to give you a heads up on that, and we keep our Board very aware in executive sessions and things like that. So they've heard about you guys' situations from the past when we had the pleasure of dealing with you folks in past bargaining sessions. So welcome and thanks for coming out.
Perfect. First up, Amy Cross.
Dear Lake County School Board, I have worked for Lake County Schools for 21 years as a speech and language pathologist, or SLP. I absolutely love my job and my students. I'd like to address concerns about current compensation for SLPs employed by our district. Most SLPs in our district worked under their medical licenses from the Department of Health Services Division for the state of Florida. We do not work under teaching certificates. SLPs can use this license to work in a variety of settings for much higher compensation. SLPs who work in the school setting do so because they love making positive lifelong impacts in student lives. I and my district-employed colleagues are contacted daily by various contract companies who are offering anywhere between $53 to $66 an hour to work in the schools and do the same job that they are currently doing. I do not want to leave this school district, but with inflation and rising cost of living, going to work for these contract companies is very appealing. I ask the school board to please invest in its district SLPs who build relationships with our students that last year to year as they work on their communication IEP goals. Many of our students with special needs, such as autism or developmental delays, suffer when there is a high turnover of SLPs in their schools. Having compensation that will keep current district-employed SLPs will benefit our students, our schools, and our district. Thank you very much for your attention to this very pressing matter.
Thank you, Ms. Cross. Ashley Messner?
I'm here today to express my sincere enthusiasm for my role as a speech-language pathologist within our school district and to address an important issue regarding our compensation. I will begin my third year with Lake County Schools this August, and over the last two years, I've had the privilege of working with a diverse group of students, helping them overcome communication challenges and to achieve their full potential. I truly love my job and find great joy in the progress and successes of my students. Every day, I'm inspired by their resilience and their determination, working closely with them, their families, and our dedicated team of educators. I've witnessed firsthand the positive impact that effective speech and language intervention can have on a child's academic and social development. Despite the rewards of this profession, I believe it's crucial to address the current compensation for SLPs in our district. Contract SLPs are compensated at a higher rate than direct county employees, which can lead to inconsistencies and challenges in maintaining a stable and committed team. I receive calls, emails, and text messages from contract companies daily for SLP openings in Lake County. These companies are offering double my hourly rate that I'm currently making with Lake County. Last month, the school board approved $1.3 million toward contract SLPs. I respectfully request that the school board consider a salary raise for direct hire SLPs in order to reflect the invaluable services we provide and to ensure we continue to attract and retain highly qualified professionals. Fair and competitive compensation is essential for maintaining the quality of our programs and the continuity of care for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messner. Ed Anderson?
Good evening. I'm afraid I don't have a speech written or anything like that. My father taught me I always looked someone in the eye. I've been a teacher for almost 27 years. The majority of my career's been here in Lake County. My programs have been recognized by the school board several times. We've represented this county at the state music convention. We've played for congressmen. We've done so much. So, and I really appreciate the support that I get from you guys, attending our concerts, coming to them. But I have to be honest with you. I had a very powerful moment in my career after 27 years. I'm looking at my fridge, and I'm wondering what I'm gonna feed my kids. But quite frankly, it's not enough. I work four jobs in order to try to feed my family. A lot of what I do also goes to fund my classroom. Eighty percent of the instruments, and if you've been in my room, you'll know what I'm talking about, are provided by me. A lot of the curriculum resources are provided by me. And make no mistake, I work for a wonderful school and a wonderful admin who support me totally. But I don't know how much longer I can keep it up. Honestly. I can retire in two and a half years if I want to. I do not want to. Maybe find something else that'll pay higher, but I do not want to. Those y'all who know me know I believe in what I do. But something's gotta change, because this is not good. And I'm just, be straight up and honest with you. I'll always serve this district. I'll always give my students my best. You will never get anything less. Something's gotta change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Elizabeth Emery?
Hi. Good afternoon, Board, and good afternoon, Assistant Superintendent. I almost said deputy, but it's nice to see you all this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I have some information to share with you today on behalf of our instructional union, LCEA. Louisa Bell's passing that out now for y'all. Unfortunately, Kathy was not able to attend tonight, but she's looking forward to Wednesday and Thursday's bargaining session, so you have me. First, I want to thank the Board for your continued commitment to improve Lake County Schools, for the work that we've done together in the past three years. We have seen significant growth in our district and have worked to negotiate over $30 million to educator compensation, which has translated to an average of $8,000 per educator since 2020. Despite our efforts, we have seen substantial increases in cost of living and inflation, as well as continued compression of salaries due to the 20-plus state laws dictating how educators are compensated. Florida teachers are now, on average, paid 50th in the nation, and Lake County instructional average salary is now 45th out of the 67 districts. In '22, '23, Lake was 36th, so we've seen some change there. And at the same time, we are seeing these increased salary concerns. We are seeing continued student discipline and behavior concerns, as well as increased workload. Every year before bargaining, the LCE bargaining committee asks our 2,900 educators to give input on what they would like to see negotiated. Our bargaining committee has compiled the data from over 1,000 responses in the presentation that you're receiving tonight. And Mr. Farnsworth, you'll see that a little bit more later this week if you're at bargaining. It has data collected on several surveys throughout the school year, as well as some historical data. On the general survey highlights, you'll see 89% of the respondents mentioned workload, 72% mentioned compensation, 50% mentioned safety, and then 60% said retention and recruitment is the top issue for them on the Lake County School Strategic Plan. So as a result, fair compensation, safe and healthy workload or working conditions, and work-life balance and educator voice are our top priorities for bargaining this year. So we use this information to then drive our proposals during negotiations. Our bargaining discussions are being driven by the voices of our educators in our bargaining unit, and we recommend that you take some time to review the results, as they are from our instructional employees who have taken the time to respond to the surveys. So please take some time to look over the data, and when you have any questions, please reach out. And I do want to mention some of the wonderful educators that came to speak today. I know it's not easy to come and speak, even in the summer. A lot of our folks here today work summer school, so it's nice to have them speak and share their stories with you all. So thank you all for your time, and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Erin Lucas?
Hi. Good evening. I've worked for Lake County Schools for 13 years as an SLP. I work with students from preschool to fifth grade with various communication disorders. I get to help students go from having less than a 10-word vocabulary to having a conversation. I love my job, and I'm thankful I get to do such fulfilling work. I knew working in the schools that I would make less money than I could in a private practice or in the medical setting, but I did not think that I would make considerably less than the contract SLPs who work alongside me. Almost every day, I'm contacted by contract companies about job vacancies and Lake County Schools offering anywhere from $58 to $66 an hour, when I currently earn $37 an hour. This was so upsetting that I started researching vendor bids, and what I found was disturbing. Our district pays $68 to $85 an hour to contract companies. That is a yearly range of, rate range of $88,000 to $113,000 for a contract company to provide an SLP. If I were using all of the benefits available to a full-time Lake County therapist, I would cost the district approximately $75,000 a year. These vendor bids that the district is paying are anywhere from $13,000 to $38,000 more than a direct hire SLP makes. Our district is not just using a few contract SLPs. They're using 25, which is 40% of our total number of SLPs. In my research, I found a letter from a contract company stating that one of their Lake County contract SLPs had received offers from three different contract companies to work in Lake County Schools at salaries significantly higher than even the contract company could offer. They said they were originally going to ask for $67 an hour from Lake County, but Seminole County told them that that bid wouldn't be taken seriously because it was too low, so they asked for 75 instead. That bid was one of the ones approved when the $1.3 was a million dollars for contract SLP. SLPs was approved at the last school board meeting. All special communications had to do was ask, and the amount was approved. So we are here tonight asking that you consider investing in your direct hire SLPs. We ask that you raise our compensation so we can recruit and retain SLPs as direct hires rather than paying contract companies. We will never be able to stop the madness of paying a middleman to find SLPs at the current direct hire pay. You have shown you are willing to invest in contract SLPs, and we ask that you would do the same for your loyal direct hires. I hope we can work together to find a solution to this costly problem. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lucas. Carmory Polari?
Thank you. In addition to everything that everybody else has said, I want to talk about the speech and language pathology identity. The identity also comes with compensation. When I go to work, I've been called a speech teacher, yet with my coworkers that are occupational therapists, physical therapists, psychologists, I don't hear them say, "Occupational teacher, psychology teacher." And it's when you're not walking in your identity, there's confusion. There is discouragement in between, are you a hand? Are you the ear? Are you the eyes or the mouth? Because the hand moves, the eye sees. They're both beneficial, and they work together, but they have unique functions. I'm a speech-language pathologist certified. We all are. And in order to maintain our license, we have to continue receiving, continuing education courses. That means going to ASHA. I don't remember the last time I went to ASHA, which is my, our organization's that supports our license. At ASHA, it gives us the skills, the credits, but also the motivations, which we know it's key to learning. When we come back for ASHA, we learn new skills. We teach it to our kids. That R gets fixed a lot faster. We're so motivated, and we want to help everybody. But when was the last time we could afford $1,500, right? About that, between the cost of the conference, the hotel, to get over there. We're literally praying that ASHA will come to Orlando so that we can get that. I've been with Lake County Public Schools with 10 years. I love it. You can look at my past. You can look at my observations and my, all the formals. I give my best. Excellence is what I do. I don't know how to do anything else than that. And I will continue. But like the gentleman said, I too have a side business, a side hustle. That's just apophocary, in order to make ends meet. I don't want to do that. I was born to speak. I was born to teach. I was born to rehabilitate and remediate. I was born. And I love working in Lake County Public Schools because I can work with the poor, the middle class, and the rich. In private practice, you have the poor, the rich, the middle class. Sometimes I'm middle class. When my son used to have some issues, I couldn't even afford therapy, because we know the reality of insurance. But when you work for a public school system, you can work with the poor, the middle class, and the rich. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Polari. Nicole Dodge?
Hello, everyone. I'm also a speech-language pathologist. We have master's degrees in communication sciences and disorders, which include 72 credit hours, over 400 supervised clinical hours, and countless hours in a clinical fellowship year that is required by the American Speech and Language Association. As an SLP, holding my clinical certificate of competence, I evaluate, diagnose, and provide treatment for articulation, language, fluency, and swallowing disorders across the lifespan. In this school district, I provide services to over 75 students a week in group settings. In one group alone, I might have one child with an articulation disorder, one child with a fluency disorder, another child with a language impairment, and another child using an alternative communication device to speak. Planning for sessions has become difficult due to increased caseloads, writing IEPs and attending IEP meetings, writing quarterly progress reports, and billing Medicaid. In addition, SLPs are required to complete screenings and evaluations frequently to remain in compliance with state and county policies. With increased workloads, many SLPs are leaving the district to pursue more lucrative positions with contracted agencies. At this time, district SLPs, like has been stated, are making approximately $37 an hour, and we are all receiving calls daily from contracted companies offering up to $65 an hour. I'm asking you to please consider an increase in wages for your district SLPs, which will not only save the district money in the long run, but will also help hire and retain quality speech-language pathologists that can provide our students the most effective level of care and help their educational and social needs, and also give them the voice that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dodge. Carla Zaffis?
Good evening, esteemed members of the school board. My name is Carla Zaffis, and I have proudly served as a speech-language pathologist in Lake County for 11 years, with over 20 years of licensure experience across various settings. As a resident of Lake County, I chose to come to work in this district because I believe that students in public education deserved access to effective, quality, and life-changing speech and language therapeutic services. While this may not be the highest-paying job I've held, it has allowed me the opportunity to make a significant impact in the lives of hundreds of students. Over the past decade, my caseload has steadily increased, especially at Title I schools where demands are ever-growing. Unfortunately, one thing that hasn't kept pace is our compensation. Recently, our county approved a budget exceeding $1 million for contract SLP pay, leading many direct hire SLPs like myself to contemplate leaving or becoming a contracted SLP, as these companies now offer significantly higher hourly rates. It's disheartening to know that others in the same role within this district are compensated twice as much. I urge you to strongly consider a pay increase for the direct, dedicated, hired SLPs who continue to remain committed to Lake County. By investing in us now, you're ensuring that we can continue to invest in the success and well-being of all our students. Because after all, children are the world's most valuable resource and our greatest hope for the future. Thank you for your time and attention to this critical matter.
Thank you, Ms. Zaffis. Mary Ellen Griffin?
Good evening, Assistant Superintendent Farnsworth and the school board. The first thing I want to do is thank you. I did note that you were supporting, I believe it was HB 13, where teachers would receive $65,000 starting salary. And I know that wouldn't happen, and it never made it to the floor. But I did appreciate seeing our school district, and I felt very supported when I saw that you guys were lobbying for that. I also noted that Governor DeSantis has, I think it was $1.25 million for salaries to teachers, and I approximated what this district received from that $1.25 million. And so you can imagine my surprise when I saw what was offered on the bargaining table. Teaching is my passion. I've been doing it for 24 years, most of them in this district. I have published in newspapers and magazines, small newspapers and magazines, because I do what I love. I have a master's degree in my field. I teach English-language arts. I teach, this school year, I'll be teaching dual enrollment and 10th grade. This is, in fact, my passion. But because this is my passion, and because this is my calling, does not mean that you should not be treating me like a professional. And the offer that you made was not professional in any way, shape, or form. In fact, it was really disappointing. I want to just share something else with you. I was looking at the Florida Department of Education and the Florida State statistics, and what I noted was our salary increase has been approximately 10% since 2011. The cost of living has gone up 21%. The cost of housing has gone up 44%. Now, I'm not asking anybody to feel sorry for me, because I do really well. I'm like the charity case in my family. They're mostly lawyers. Sometimes I wish I would've went to law school. But I love my students, and I love my job, and I would like to stay here. And so what I'm asking you to do, and I heard you say you value teachers, what I would like you to do is put your money where your mouth is and show us that you truly value teachers by giving us a fair increase. And I understand it's not gonna be what many of us would like, to meet the 44% increase in housing. But I know that you can definitely do better than you have done. And so I ask you to re-figure your figures when we go back to the bargaining table this week. And I thank you.
Thank you. Christine Dodana?
Hi. Good evening. Thanks for letting me turn in my work late. My kids do it all the time. So I am an instructional, non-load-bearing school counselor, another redheaded stepchild of the bargaining world. 22 years ago this month, I became the school counselor at Groveland Elementary, and I stayed there through the death of a student, two years where we were one student short of another counselor, no matter what we said. FCAT and other testing changes, changes in how to identify kids who need more support. A second counselor, changes in administration. And ultimately, when a different principal came and the school shifted, it was no longer where I fit as my school home. So then in 2014, in October, I moved to Lake Mineola, where I have stayed through seven student deaths, COVID, added testing, removed testing, waived testing, so much testing. Active shooter drills, changing graduation requirements, and so much more. Always trying to manage my ever-increasing list of duties as the school counselor, which is a job that sometimes feels like a junk drawer in a safe deposit box had a baby, but I digress. I stay through sad tears for the happy tears, like when I saw several of my Groveland kids graduate as hawks. I stay when I can't afford the dental work I need, because I have a graduated student who will tell you that I kept her from suicide. I stay when I can't afford a vacation, because I will stand in the gap for my kid in the class of 24, whose mom told me as a junior that she threw up her hands where he was concerned, but a couple of us pushed and we got him graduated, and he thanked us. I stay even though I have no savings account, despite my advanced degrees and 22 years of loyalty to this district and my simple life, because I connect with those rough kids. And the others, the kids that people don't always like, and the mom who wants to threaten the school, the school board, and the pregnant girl who we got graduated anyway, and all of those situations. I connect with those people, and I'm always trying to fill everyone else from my empty cup. And it hurts to work here for 22 years with no fancy lifestyle and no kids trying to take my money from my bank account for college and stuff, and no real hope of ever affording to retire. And I do have a second job, because I don't know anyone in my position who wouldn't. When budget cuts come up, I always hear school counselors being put on the chopping block, so I can't even afford to ever step away from my professional service contract, not as long as my role is seen as so expendable. I will keep giving well beyond the hurt every time, because I was raised to be loyal, and I was put on this earth to serve and care for others. Ask anyone who knows me. I just wonder when this district will start to return the favor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Educational Foundation report. Ms. Casey Evanson?
Good evening, Board members. This month is July, and it is our Red for Ed Community-Wide School Supply Drive that runs the entire month. We have over 75 locations participating all across Lake County. Our weigh-in this year will be at the district office on Wednesday, August 1st, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. Shred for Ed is being held at the district office. Shred for Ed is being held at the district office this Saturday, July thirteenth, from nine A.M. to twelve, and anyone is welcome to bring any paperwork that they need shredded with the donation of any of our school supplies. Each donation will actually receive a T-shirt from our partners at Edgewater Family Wealth. We'll be participating again at this year's launch into Lake, sharing more about the foundation with our new teachers, as well as sponsoring lunch for these attendees. We have purchased over fifteen hundred backpacks and school supplies to be distributed to our elementary schools based on FTE numbers. Those will be distributed sometime over the summer before the beginning of the school year. We actually have a sorting day this week at our central warehouse with our business partners at Addition Financial, who just today actually decided to purchase more backpacks for us to stuff. So Stepping Out for Education will be held later this month in Leesburg at the Venetian Center. It's on Friday, July twenty-sixth, and Saturday, July twenty-seventh. This event is sold out for both Friday and Saturday. Later this month, we get to provide breakfast at the upcoming school bookkeeper meeting, as well as a small token of our appreciation for all that they do for us. We have a few recent grants that have included ten thousand dollars from Duke Energy that has been earmarked for robotics and science fair. The Steve's, Barry, and Monar grants have been received for a total of thirteen thousand dollars for backpacks. We received twenty-five thousand dollars from Disney, which has been earmarked for the teacher intern program. Our selection committee that has been tasked with the search for the executive director of the foundation will be starting interviews this week for several of our candidates. This month's board meeting is being held on Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, at twelve o'clock at the district office, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Attorney Report, Mr. Cole?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Unfinished business, we also have none. Moving down to the consent agenda, Mr. Farnsworth, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend approval of the consent agenda, items eight-point-zero-one through ten-point-zero-nine.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass is three-oh. All right. We have no discussion items this evening. Superintendent's report, Mr. Farnsworth?
Uh, don't have a direct superintendent report, but we do have a couple letters of condolence sent to James Peterkin, who's husband of Marjorie Peterkin, food service assistant at Eustace Middle, and father of Tarhonda Williams, content area coach at Beverly Shores Elementary, and also letter of condolence sent to Linda Marie Taylor, retired custodian at Taver's Elementary School.
Thank you, sir. Board member comments, Mr. Mathias?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Dodd?
Yeah, um, well, you know, I, um, I wanted to thank the group for coming out tonight. I have a kid of my own who benefited from some, that's right, I see you, some speech services, and forever indebted to you, and so your value is certainly not lost on me. And I, I know we can't really get into discussions on this sort of context, but just my understanding of the process, you all have, LCA has met, or you are meeting with the district this week, and for collective bargaining session, and, and some proposals come forward from there, and, and then do we have any sort of timeline for when we might have an executive session to be able to look at those sorts of things?
We're gonna see how much. We actually have two long sessions back-to-back this week on Wednesday and Thursday. We collectively agreed to see how much we get, how close we can get then, so definitely coming out of those two bargaining sessions, as well as the SEIU bargaining session tomorrow. I'll be coming back to you very soon with an executive session, so.
Okay. All right. Excellent. I look forward to that. Thank you.
Yeah, same thing. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We hear you, we value you, and I sincerely say we look forward to working with you to share these, uh, solve these common concerns. I know you're in good hands with Mr. Farnsworth and with the LCA staff, and look forward to this executive session and know where we go from here, but thank you for coming out. Come out anytime, we're always here to support, and we appreciate it very much. If that's all, that's the end of the gen, the agenda, any issue with adjourning? All right, we're adjourned.